But we do have quorum.
Okay, well, we can go ahead and get started then. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve the agenda.
All right, let me put a gallery view on. Oh, Newman's got second. Okay, anyone opposed? Fantastic. Do I have? Welcome, Chris, connecting audio. Do I have any any motion or changes to the minutes?
Yeah, there was a couple of just timing issues. I had lost the piece of paper that told me when Newman checked in and when he checked out, it was like buried in the bottom of my backpack, so I have to make a note on that for the final minutes. But I don't know if anybody else has any other changes. They were really brief.
Okay, then do we have a motion to accept the minutes? Thank you, Melanie. Did I get a second? Was Chris, was that you seconding or playing? Oh, thank you, Jane. Jane seconds. Oh, because you weren't there, of course. So, yeah, and then anyone objecting and then Chris is abstaining, obviously. Who else wasn't present? Anthony?
I was semi-present. For a very short time.
We'll just mark down that Chris and Anthony are abstaining because they were absent. Okay, let's move on to community rep reports. So I think Cole was here first, so I'm gonna go in that order today. So Cole, take it away.
All right, sounds good. So I don't have too much to report on. I'm gonna first start out with a update that was made by Caltrans a few hours ago about a local grant program is part of Clean Cal, it's Clean California Initiative. So this local grant program is gonna be able to disperse $300 million to local or regional agencies that apply. And this money is gonna go towards litter abatement products, projects as well as beautification projects. Currently, there's no specific deadline that's been announced yet. However, it will probably be sometime in February. So I just wanted to give you all a heads up on that. But ultimately, this is gonna be a program that local agencies will have to apply for. However, nonprofits can partner with those local agencies. And these agencies can submit as many applications as needed and multiple grants can be awarded. In total, those grants can be up to $5 million, too. So there is the potential for some pretty meaningful projects there. Next, I'm just gonna let you know that legislature is in recess. It will reconvene on Monday, January 3rd, which means that Senator Atkins is spending is spending a lot more time in her district. I've been staffing around a lot of events, lots of veterans events, since I cover veterans issues. But most recently, I staffed the Senator for an event over at Scripps Oceanography. Launched a, there is a project called SOARS, which stands for Scripps Ocean Atmosphere Research Simulator that basically study creates like this mini ocean and it like studies, it's supposed to like study like impacts like climate change and how the ocean relates to the atmosphere. There's from my understanding of it, which is very limited. It's supposed to be this really, really important project that should hopefully be able to allow ton of meaningful research to go forward. One point that the Senator made is that projects like this help inform our policymakers to make better decisions for future policy. That's all I have, but I'm open to take any questions and I'll leave my contact information in the message box.
Go for it, Tracy.
I just want to give a shout out to Cole. I know I saw you at another meeting and I gave you a shout out there, but I want to give you a shout out for to to the people who are watching this meeting because you guys came through with my unemployment problem. And I love it. If anybody doesn't know, I got laid off, so. And of course, the EDD was a nightmare, so Cole really came through and busted butt for me. And I 100% appreciate you, Cole.
Yes, of course. Thanks for bringing that up, too. That's always appreciated. I just try to like if anyone needs assistance with the state agency, I just try to be as responsive as possible with opening up casework.
All right, great. Are you, is the Senator gonna be at the holiday parade on Saturday?
No, I did see that on our schedule, but I can attend if if you want. I'm happy to go.
Calm down. It's a great little time.
Yeah, I've heard good things about it. I've never been.
Definitely way better than PBs. Okay. Coda, you're up next.
I'll go really quickly.
Oh, yeah.
I had I had my hand up. I might have gone.
Oh, I was looking, just looking at the pictures, sorry.
No worries. I just wanted to reinforce the leading topic that Cole brought up, that Clean California agenda is really a big deal. And so I've been in touch a little bit with those folks and there is a lot of money available to local arts and arts organizations to help beautify, so really up to like $15 million. It's a lot of money that we could be seeing here. So I know there's art supporters on the on the board and probably tuning in. And so something to definitely worth Googling about Clean California. It's a big deal. So thanks, Cole, for bringing it up.
Yeah, sure thing.
Thanks, Chris. All right. I'm gonna move on to Coda now.
Cool. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, thanks.
Good going, everyone. Coda Zeiser here with the mayor's office. Not a whole lot to report on my end either. We did just release a grants announcement last week. And it's just a quick report on how our small business and nonprofit grants have been doing since we allocated about $10 million within this fiscal year's budget. So to date, we've been able to provide some financial relief to about 1,000 small businesses located in San Diego. That totals about $6 million allocated, so there's still some pots of money available. I don't believe there's any current small business grants, applications that are open. But I'll continue relaying information as they come up to me. About 90% of all the businesses that have received grants have fewer than 100 employees. So it's really helping out the backbone of the local economy. And then the other item is our Mayor for a Day essay contest. So this is open to elementary and middle school kids. And it's a 300-word essay or a three-minute video. And the prompt is, if you were mayor for a day, what would you do to make our city better? So the winner will be chosen sometime early next year. They'll get an opportunity to shadow the mayor for a day, tag along to all his meetings and events. This is actually an event that the mayor participated in when he was in elementary school and he came in second place. And so this is a cool thing for him to do as mayor now. I'll put a link in the chat, so if you guys have any kids in your families or any, you know, students that you know that would be interested, please relay it along. That's it for me right now. I'll put my info in the chat, so you guys can reach out directly. But I'm more than happy to take any questions.
Are you sure that adults can't apply for that? Because that would be really a lot of fun.
I feel like there'd be a lot of creative ideas if adults applied. But well, we'll keep this one for kids and then we'll do, we'll do, we'll do an adult one later on.
Is there gonna be a place where we can read all the adorable responses?
I'm hoping that we make it public because it's it's gonna be cute. I'm looking forward to it. The application deadline is December 13th. We may push it back to the end of the month, depending on how many kids apply. But yeah, I'm hopeful that we do a lot of good social media around this.
All right, great. Does anyone else have any questions for the mayor's office? All right, awesome. We will move on to Teddy Martinez from Council President Campbell's office. Take it away, Teddy.
Everyone, good to see you all. Congrats on your last meeting of the year. You all have done tremendous amount of work this year. And so congrats on making it to the finish line. Not too much to report. The council was on recess for the Thanksgiving break, but we have returned. We've got meetings coming up through through the end of the 17th, which is the final stretch of the year for the city council. We'll have a bunch of committee meetings and and council meetings, so stay tuned for that. Obviously, the vendor's ordinance is gonna be coming before the council on December 14th. We're excited for that and ready to release the draft language, although I understand there's some tweaks being made right now. So that should be released, but it has been noticed and will be public pretty shortly. So we're excited for that. We'll also have the COVID Responsive Recovery Committee meeting on December 13th at 9:00 AM. Obviously, with the Omicron variant that was just announced today in California, it is, we're gonna have some county health folks there to give us the insight into what we need to look out for. As this is now in California, the first detected case of that. And then we'll also be talking about the convention center and its outlook, given the the fact that it's such a huge net positive to our TOT tax, to our sales tax and revenue. Be excited to see what their outlook looks like as we begin to open up and have more events. And then next week, we'll be seeing the CIP monitoring report. These are for big projects, capital improvement projects. We've got some good news there that we'll be getting some money for Sunset Cliffs Natural Park and as well as Santa Cruz Access Point, so super excited for that funding to come in. And as always, our main priorities are the lifeguard station and the library and the OB peer. We have been having a lot of conversations about the peer in the library and hoping that we can get more community engagement on the library as well as getting more funding through the CIP process for the peer. So that's super good news. And then as we turn the corner into next year, we're gonna begin our budget process. And so I know you have on the agenda today your budget priorities. I've said this before, but the budget process can be confusing and a bit obscure. So if you have questions about that process, please let me know. Council President Campbell will be putting her priority list together over the holiday break. We're already receiving a lot of input from different groups and organizations as to how we can best advocate for them. So excited to hear what you all have to say tonight and hope you can send me all of that in writing. So I can put that forward for you all as always. This group's always great about putting that stuff together, so excited to see that. Other than that, as you all know, there's always always something going on, but we're knocking down fires every day. So that's that's pretty much it for today. Hope everyone's well, happy to take any questions. And I'll put my contact info in the chat for those that don't have it.
You mentioned funding about Santa Cruz Access Point. Are those stairs in jeopardy or what? What would that money be going towards?
This is just to improve the access. I think it's about $100,000. There was some cleanup that needed to be done there just to improve safety. As you know, a lot of those access points face erosion from from water from the ocean kind of getting higher and causing storm damage there. So those access points have been all a priority orchard, Santa Cruz, Bermuda. And so we're delighted to see some money going to Santa Cruz, so we can continue to have that access.
All right, great. Any other questions for Councilmember's office? I do have one question. So is the ordinance subject to the Brown Act? Will we at least get it three days prior to the meeting?
Yeah, everything is subject to the Brown Act, so yeah.
So well, at least, okay, cool.
So I do know that we've been getting a lot of questions. Everyone's eager to see the language. Obviously, the council president has to see the the final draft first. But as soon as we're able to release that publicly, we'll we'll be doing that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Questions, questions, comments, concerns? Awesome. Okay. Let's roll right into non-agenda public comment. I'm gonna give two minutes for anyone who wishes to speak. You can either raise your hand in the chat or raise it in your in your picture. And I'll let you go. Okay, Anthony, I see that.
Excuse me. Yeah. If the board members recall, I'm sorry, I've got a head cold. If the board members recall, several months ago, maybe over a year ago, a property owner at 2077 Cable Street came forward to the board for a project and was actually approved by us. It was really nicely done. That property owner subsequently decided to sell the property after he got his coastal permit, before he got his building permits, and he sold it. And then the owners quickly decided to erect or put in some modular units in the back where that where that build was gonna be done, basically trailers, and start to build around it. And I didn't say anything about it. And then I saw that they were trying to remodel inside of them and attach them to the to the house and didn't fly with me. So I put it up, I put in a violation ordinance with with inspection. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, as you know, we all stewards of 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 architecture and OB here. And that was, it's a clear violation, at the very least, because there's structural integrity. There's wheels on raw dirt that the first rain comes, anybody's gonna be occupying those things, they're gonna be in hazard. So I just want to let you y'all aware that that you might, this might show up. And again, it's really egregious. And to keep an eye out for things like that, I've seen that, you know, some folks are trying to put some shady things in. And this is really, really shady. So I wanted to put it out there and to just some awareness of this. And we're gonna try to keep the the integrity of the OB community plan intact. And this is what our function is. So just so it's just, I'll give you an update as it as the inspection for the violation comes comes to date here. It's gonna come up in a few weeks.
Well, thanks. I do, I think I remember receiving pictures of that and I alerted the planner. And I just, I didn't know about the sale, but he said that the existing permits were still open, so.
Yeah, the existing, well, the existing permit is still open under the previous owner's name. And regardless, what what these people are doing is nothing close to what were on the plans, so yeah.
Yeah, no, totally. Okay, thanks, Anthony. And and then I have another Anthony, Anthony Bennett. I'm gonna give you two minutes. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anthony Bennett and I'm with IS Architecture. And I previously reached out to Andrea earlier today and I just want to introduce myself. My client, Robert Sutton, will be, he will be presenting that, once we get approval through Andrea and the committee, that we'll be presenting the Ocean Beach Bed and Breakfast. It's a five-unit bed and breakfast that's gonna be on 4744 Volterra Street. So I just want to introduce myself and just say hello and be looking out for that presentation coming soon.
Thank you, Anthony. And I have seen it. It does look cute. So that'll be maybe in January or February coming up.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thanks. Anyone else for non-agenda public comment before we hop in? Okay, so the first item on the agenda, as we all know, elections are coming up in March. So I would like to form the selection committee this month so that by January, we can present the rules and all the paperwork. So then by February, we can present the full candidate slate at that meeting. And then March will have the election. So that's kind of the timeline I'm working on. So I'm looking for at least two people to volunteer. And I think two people is easier because then you don't have to declare meetings and it's not a violation of the Brown Act if you just kind of get together and and make the paperwork. It's really just changing the dates over from year to year and keeping everything up to date with the bylaws and then making sure that, you know, one of you is manning the election booth and and collecting our mail-in ballots and going through them and counting them. So I, so the people who are eligible to put together this committee and not up for reelection this year are, oh, sorry, Melanie. And then I have Melanie, I have Richard, Chris, Craig, George, who isn't here, but he told me over email, he was not interested. And Tom can all form this committee. So do I have out of those any volunteers? Melanie, you'd be willing to do it? Thanks, Melanie. Do I have maybe one more person? We'll just help her out because we need kind of, you know, more than one person.
I can't handle it. I need help.
Are we gonna do them? Do you think we'll do them electronically again this year?
Yeah, I think we'll keep the whole system that we had in place.
Okay. I will be available for support if anybody needs me, but I can't, I can't tinker with anything. I just can talk you through how to do it. But since I'm up for election, I can't really.
Melanie, I'll vote and help you with that. I've done this before.
Awesome, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
So can I have a motion to approve Melanie and Richard as our election committee?
I'll motion to approve.
Thank you, Tracy. Newman has a second. Okay, and then can I, does anyone object to that? Nope. Okay, perfect. Great. Okay, so yeah, hopefully Tracy can send you over all the stuff and kind of walk you through everything. Like I said, we'll just have a quick presentation at January, kind of showing it. And then in February, everyone will have to get their applications to you by then. And then you'll just present everyone who's verified and has all their signatures. And then on March, you'll count up the ballots. Thank you, guys. It's obviously one of the more important things we do every year. All right, so moving on to our budget requests. So as code, sorry, as Teddy said, this is a much longer process. The fiscal year budget doesn't get approved until about June or July. I'm gonna say of next year, but it's really important that we get all of our requests in early. So there are priority as the, as our council members kind of working through things and finalizing what she will request. In the past, as he's mentioned, you know, lifeguard station, library, pier, seawall access have always been the top, top ones for us as well as more funding for parks and, you know, cleaning up around our beaches. And so that's typically where it is. Is there anyone who has more? And I assume those are gonna be our major budget requests unless anyone has any objections to that. Are there any, are there any other budget requests that we would like to see from the city funding? I I know Tracy, when she thought she wasn't going to be here today, put out street washing. And that does kind of tie in with OBMA bid district. But I would like to see the city seriously help out with street washing this year, too. And I wouldn't mind putting that in as one of our budget requests. So I'll open up the floor to anyone.
Hey, Tracy, can you, or Andrea, can you maybe elaborate on the street washing? This isn't the street sweeping that's done once a month, is it?
No.
Is it expanding in that?
What I was hoping for is that we could get some money that goes towards these kinds of like initiatives where we actually clean the sidewalks, not really street, street washing, because that's already been taken care of with our, you know, weekly or whatever in your area, street cleaning. But I read something recently that there was some money that was gonna go towards actual sidewalk sanitation cleaning and stuff. And I'd just like to make sure that that stays in our budget and in our funding options and that, you know, bids or whoever needs it can apply for it. I'd really like to see the money available to anybody, a business or anybody who wants to apply for it for their, the front of their business, too. So I mean, if we could get something like that available to more people, maybe it would help people motivate to clean their sidewalks more often.
Like a voucher program?
That or just having, I mean, because if we, if we say, hey, you know, we want the city to clean our sidewalks on a regular basis, you know that they're gonna be like, ah, you know, when and what, you know.
Yeah.
Scheduling is gonna be crazy, but a voucher system would be really amazing if we could do something like that, you know?
What sidewalks are you propose cleaning?
All of them. No, like Voltaire for one and then Newport for another, Down Abbott, Bacon.
So you're just looking at the commercial streets?
Yeah, because those are the ones that really get hit the hardest and honestly.
Sounds like something for the merchants association to take care of.
Yeah, but it would be really, really nice if there was kind of a voucher program that they could apply for or, you know, and hire their own or if the city could actually, you know.
And also with COVID, there's been a lot of OBMA members who just, they're completely strapped for cash and a lot of people haven't been able to pay their dues. So that's kind of why it's been getting messy down there, I would have to say. And we haven't seen the power washers out. Like we use, the OBMA used to be able to pay for security. We like daily security guards, private security, as well as weekly power washing. And both of those have had to fall to the wayside since COVID hit.
Yeah, no, I see some of the merchants pay guys to clean their sidewalks early in the morning. I see it sometimes.
Yeah.
I think I put more bathroom maintenance down, more money for public trash can pickups and more trash receptacles, streetlight repairs and potentially more street lighting in public places. Those are items that I had kind of thrown into a list.
Virginia?
Yeah, along the same lines, a lot of cities have those dog baggies and baskets that attach to a pole. It's really helpful. You might want to apply for that.
I think we added that to our list one year along with like trash receptacles.
Are there, are there a few of those on Newport currently or am I just imagining that? I know that there are Sunset Cliffs and Dog Beach.
There are several of those along Newport Avenue that the OBMA funds through their S and Safe Program. I know that they have had a hard time keeping the bags in stock, though. They they seem to run out very quickly. Well, the city seems to prefer those doggy, they're called doggy pot bags. They're really expensive and the dispenser doesn't hold very many. But I just remember visiting Santa Barbara. They had rolls of green bags that were perfectly good and probably not nearly as costly, so.
Well, I mean, it's clear that we have a trash issue in OB. And I don't know if it's because we don't have enough trash receptacles in strategic places. So I believe that either last year or the year before, we actually requested more trash receptacles. And along those same lines, we asked for dog bag dispensers with those trash receptacles. So, you know, people know where the trash cans are and they throw their poop bags away. But that was definitely one of the things. Can we request that other thing that I had mentioned for, well, now that planning boards are on the hot seat, but more money for technology for our our meetings? And, you know, whatever outreach that we can. I mean, I know we've kind of mentioned increasing our our yearly amount so that we can cover those things. Is that something that we can add to our budget?
I think we should certainly, you know, make it known since that hasn't really worked its way through council yet. I think we should certainly put forward that we would like to keep our CPG budget intact. So moving forward, that's something we have for support, especially if we're going to continue to do the Zoom meetings and have, you know, a website, maintain a website and a post off, post P O box and all of that stuff. I think that'd be appropriate.
All right. Anybody else have any ideas?
Is there any other big thing? Because I know I, it's hard because we ask for the same things every year and they don't really get funded. But, you know, we did get a lot of money for the lifeguard station, so hopefully that moves and pushes forward. I'm pretty sure that there is money currently for the repair to the two pylons and that should be happening soon. So and yeah, so it's same old, same old until we get something new, I guess. Is there, do we want to request anything for the Ebers Park Streets improvements that we're kind of in the motions for? The shade structures, yeah, or the water station and the fence around the park?
Yes, it would be to add those Evers Street Park to the budget request with the shade structures, the water fountain, the fencing.
And an older kids playground. Yeah, those, the three or the four that we got. Okay, cool. Well, because we haven't really moved forward. And I know, Nicole, you're working separately on the Saratoga Park, correct? Or, yeah.
What about money for the beautification of the roundabout area?
Or place making?
Yes.
And to keep people from driving over the middle, right?
Well, that's, that's my concern that if you put anything there, because the roundabout is so narrow, it seems like, I don't see how delivery trucks are gonna be able to do anything besides drive right over the center of that. And so that if you put something in the center of it, it's going to possibly create more problems.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking really low, low to the ground artwork. I have, I have a vision, of course, I have a vision. But, you know, we could do like a really beautiful, like rock scape or something like that that doesn't go all the way out to the edge of the roundabout. So it still gives people kind of an area to to go over if they need to. But another area that could really use some beautification is that weird like triangle about. Kevin nicknamed it a triangle about, so I've been calling it the triangle about because it's the, it's the part that they had to kind of increase the size of it and then put the crosswalks in it. And it's this big honkin' like piece of concrete now that could use a little bit of beautification. And it's this big honkin' like piece of concrete now that could use a little bit of beautification. And then there's also some uh bulb outs in front of the Bobos that could also use like a little bit of beautification as well. So I'm not sure how we wanna really address those. It was something that I was gonna bring up maybe in January or something, but um there's a couple of different options that we can do. We can either do, you know, a thing where we get fundraising and do a project on our own, or we can put it in a budget request or you know, it's not CIP level, but it's definitely something that it could use. So I don't know if we wanna put that on this year's budget request, though.
Do you think that would be, yeah, um do you think that would be something we'd be able to get grants for, like a place making grant or something along that line or?
Yeah, I'm not so sure about the place making grant. Maybe what um, what Cole was mentioning earlier, that kind of sounded a little promising. Um the Clean California or whatever, maybe we can apply for that, but um the commission doesn't really do grants like that so much, or at least they're not doing it right now, but they do have an approval process for things in the public space. So if we could get the funding and the support and the art and get everything like all our ducks in a row and then present it to the commission, they could approve it for us, but they probably wouldn't give us any money. So, but there's gotta be money out there somewhere.
Yeah, okay.
Should we uh invite public input on that, design input?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, this would be something that the town council could actively be involved in too, you know?
They have grants as well.
They do. They absolutely do.
Okay, so maybe we'll leave that one off. Yeah, Anthony?
Uh I, I have one I just kinda came up with. I've been thinking for a while. I'm not sure if it qualifies. Um there, there are several maybe more than several, uh storm drain uh grates and entrances that are broken that have to be replaced, uh that allow uh huge amounts of trash to most likely clog at the storm drains, but at the very least have a re- you know, a lot of refuge go into the ocean. I would like to see those repaired. I know that the city, I, I think it's part of the city's streets redevelopment projects, but um there certainly are some that, that not only need some continuous maintenance after storms to, to clean off the, the garbage.
That's a good one.
Yeah, and I, I'm pretty sure if Kevin was here, he would echo that same thing and overall just our whole stormwater management system.
Do we have a, do we have a list of the last budget request made, Anya? I, I'm sorry if I missed any meeting materials too. I think it was really helpful. Last time we did this was just to see what did we submit for last time and do we all kind of agree these are priorities or, yeah. It sounds like there's a few new ones, but I can't remember what we put in last year, honestly.
Yeah, no worries. Um OPB record search. The letter should be on the website.
I'm looking right now. Well. Yeah. It is not.
Alright.
Wasn't trying to put anyone on the spot, just.
Yeah, 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 here it goes. Uh here we are. Uh, okay. Alright, so we kind of put it into, we, we kind of put it into um like three chunks. We said coastal access, infrastructure facility product, projects and pedestrian bike safety. And um if you'd like, I can go ahead and share my screen.
Yeah, I think that'd be useful.
Okay. Ah shoot, alright. Okay, whoops, hold on. Alright, can everybody see that one?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Alright. So the first group was the coastal access group. And uh Bermuda Stairs or Bermuda Orchard, Santa Cruz, Silver Spray Alley and Tide Pool Access. Infrastructure and facilities, so lifeguard station and library are always on there.
So I think we'd probably add back in the pier as well to infrastructure.
Mm-hmm. Pedestrian and bike safety. Many unfunded needs. Following projects are listed in no order of importance. So beacon and crosswalk at Voltaire and Food.
That one is funded. Um sorry, I do know that that is funded and scheduled to be installed here shortly. So that should be resolved hopefully within the next six months.
Cool, yeah. Oh God, you know, I always forget that there's still a dirt alley somewhere. I mean, I, I think I've seen two of them, actually.
Actually, that's, that must be the one west of Sunset Cliffs.
Mm-hmm.
By the end of Sunset Cliffs.
There's also one off of Cable and between Long Branch and Brighton.
Yeah, I thought there was two. It's really just weird.
Two dirt alleys.
Uh safety improvements, yeah, that we just requested that, right? Safety improvements for pedestrians.
Yeah.
Wayfinding for cyclists. Yeah, that's been on our lit, that's kind of come up over and over again is the better, better wayfinding signs. Um I don't, you know, I don't know if we wanna continue to keep that there cuz it's not happening. Phase three of the OB entryway, who knows what's going on with that? Nicole, do you know anything? Cuz that's CDC, right?
That is, and I believe that phase three referenced a plan to build a walkway, uh sorry, it's either connecting the current walkway to the Rob Field walkways. Or there was a plan in the works some years ago to build a walkway over Sunset Cliffs Boulevard, connecting Dusty Roads Park, but I don't think that that was moving forward at all. So it must be the connection between the OB entryway and the existing uh concrete walkways in Rob Field.
And then we requested the traffic calming uh survey for West Point Loma uh last, last meeting. Um and pedestrian access to bust up at West Point Loma and Cable. So that, uh anything having to do with West Point Loma right now is gonna be um kind of preempted by the study that we requested last time, cuz that's the entire strip. And I also believe that in um Jen Campbell's budget, there was note of the cable street crosswalk maybe being installed at one point, so maybe that's still kind of out there and gonna happen. Alright.
This is really helpful. Tracy, all the way to the top, are all the coast of the coastal access projects, are they all still? These all active? Meaning um should, should they still be on our priority list?
I think everything to my knowledge should be funded. We are just waiting for Bermuda to start construction and then all, everything else should have been either completed or in the process. To your point.
Yeah.
Andre?
Yeah.
Oh, I did wanna um make a recommendation. I know that prior to the pandemic, the board had um approved um a traffic safety letter with regard to Ocean Beach Elementary. And um there were several requests to um install, you know, traffic safety mitigations around the parameter of the school. And a few of those items have not yet been addressed. Um I'd like to potentially see this be um placed on that list as well, just because as school has returned to in person, there has been the return of all the traffic safety issues that we were experiencing before the pandemic. And um I believe that the community would appreciate that relief.
Let's see if I can find that letter. Uh in an admission, sorry, and I was just looking at Teddy put in Jen, uh Councilmember Campbell's budget request from last year, and there was a big section on the homeless um issue, and I, I would like to just reiterate our need for a full-time outreach person in Ocean Beach and around uh the whole peninsula as well. So I think that would be important um for our budget requests.
I'd like, I'd like to agree with Chris that there are, I think it was Chris about the so, the storm allowing trash through um there, they should not be made to wait until streets gets around to it within their routine. We should make a special request for that.
Man, I really need to be able to spell.
Alright, so, sorry Manny, I just pulled up the list. Um so has there not been a lit? There's no lit crosswalk between the elementary school and the kinder- in the kindergarten, correct?
Um no, they didn't. It's not lit up. It's got the flashing beacon there, but uh I know that there was pedestrian led lighting to be installed at the intersection of um Sunset Cliffs and Newport and Sunset Cliffs and Santa Monica. Um that has not yet been changed and that was going to promote the visibility of the pedestrian and the crosswalk. Um the school has um sourced, Wayne is no longer at that location. He's um at Newport and Sunset Cliffs. The school has taken ownership of that crosswalk that connects the two campuses. So um there is staff, uh school staff that is manning that in the morning and in the afternoons. But um there is a lot of issues with people not, you know, still running the red lights, um speeding. Um the school, it just, there's a lot of issues with the school just due to its proximity to Sunset Cliffs, as well as we don't have a drop-off and pickup area for our school. And so um we're having a lot of issues, especially along Newport. Um I've let Marco know about this, but there's parents who are leaving their vehicle in the middle of the street and then walking their kid to the class line and leaving the vehicle there and creating um you know, a nuisance and, and exacerbating an already stressful situation. So um more enforcement, more support for that school would be very helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Mandy. Um and so the pedestrian, and just following up, uh the pedestrian led crosswalk would be replacing the one at Santa Monica so that or
No, um sorry, I, do you have the letter in front of you? I apologize. I know that we were more focused on trying to find um you know, the OBMA was trying to source the, the security in the afternoon. But as far as the individual request, I know that there was a request to look and um, you know, repaint, re-stripe all the sidewalks around the parameter, I believe. Um and then we did request the pedestrian led lighting and then
Does this look familiar?
Yeah.
Yeah, an increased police presence during the morning and, yeah, the night. And then a city-funded designated safe routes to school coordinator.
Yeah, they don't have, they have the flashing beacon there, but there's no lighted crosswalk. And honestly, um after further um understanding of that request, um I don't believe that would be a, a, a good request, being that those lights tend to be um damaged when cars um transit over them. So um the flashing beacon is there currently. Um I don't think that the lighting, um uh you know, the track lighting across the the, uh sorry, uh the crosswalk would be um a good request, just because it, they are prone to be damaged.
Alright, so just the uh
The pedestrian led lighting. Um and with that, I believe um that comes, I, Teddy might be able to clarify, but I think there's signage that gets installed with that as well. I believe we also requested that there be no like left turn during certain hours to help ensure um to control the traffic on that street as well.
Yeah, with the, the idea with the right-hand turn only during certain times would just primarily do the fact that the school hours to do that would you know, you'd have to do that only certain times of the day. And then we did do a traffic study that showed that um that the, the side, that the crosswalk that you're mentioning wasn't uh, wasn't needed. And so we can, we can gin up that conversation with them again. Um but we did go through this and, and we're told that, you know, but we even had that, conducted the traffic study. Um and it was, it was determined that it wasn't uh a risk as what it seems. And so that was frustrating for us, cuz obviously we want kids to feel safe as they're crossing with their parents. Um but the cost associated with the risk of the traffic study uh didn't determine that it was necessary. But I'm happy to kind of circle back with them and see if we can reevaluate it.
Would the council member be interested in overriding, or is there an opportunity for her to override that ruling um if she wished to do so?
I'm not sure what her ability to override a traffic study and, and kind of, I, I know she can do certain things with stop signs. And we've done that in certain situations, um but with this, since it is, it would, you know, technically be a, a, a larger project um with the lighting and everything, that, I don't know what that process is, but I'm happy to, to revisit it.
Yeah, would you be able to send me that information um regarding the traffic study results? Cuz I don't believe you've received any of that information.
I'm pretty sure we went over that. Um but yeah, I'll send it again. No problem.
Alright, thank you, Teddy.
No problem.
So I'm just looking through the um budget letter. And there were, there were quite a few things that Ocean Beach.
Pretty much everything that you guys submitted was included. And so that's why I always appreciate you guys. I mean, I wrote this letter, so I pretty much know everything in it. Um and to echo, to echo Andrea's point about homelessness, and you can see here how we have different categories. Um it might behoove you to, to think about things in, in a larger picture and then zero in on them. So we're not just talking about you know, a Bermuda staircase, but we're talking about overall big city pictures in the budget that maybe other districts also have in, like issues with, like um sidewalk cleaning. You know, is that a county thing? Is that uh is that a city thing? Is that a bid thing? Overall, what would that fit under? Environmental safety and health issues, right? Like, and so thinking in cups like this letter is broken into um has helped to get other organizations uh get big picture items that might help their localized project, if that makes sense. So if it's about street resurfacing, we need a large amount of, of, of money for street resurfacing that doesn't necessarily fall into the Sexy Streets program. We could get a good chunk of money that maybe Bacon Street could, could, you know, end up um uh getting funded for, but when it's just Bacon Street, other council members, when we go through this budget process, don't know what that is. And so when it's captured under street repraving for non-neglected areas or something like that, just an example. Um but you see like neighborhood services, like there was a lot of, you know, citywide issues that could affect local communities. And so I just, you know, encourage you all to think about uh how you can cup these things into broad terms that will eventually trickle funding into the community of Ocean Beach.
Yeah, that makes sense. Do we have, can you read back what we have so far, Tracy?
Um Just the things that have been mentioned were the sidewalk voucher, uh sidewalk washing voucher, say that three times fast. Um uh trash receptacles, dog bag dispensers, uh keeping the CPG budget intact for technology, et cetera. Ebers Park Water Fountain Shades Structure, fencing, kids playground. Um Anthony mentioned storm drain entrances that are broken and allow trash to flow into the ocean. Uh Mandy is uh traffic safety around the school. Andrea, full-time homeless outreach person. Those are the things that I've heard.
And then with the addition of budget requests from our, over continuing budget requests from the previous budget letter.
Yeah.
I think with the pier.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Andrea, um one issue I'd like to bring the attention to the board is there's like only two park rangers from uh Torrey Pines all the way to Sunset Cliffs that um maintain and, and you know, serve um our public parks along the coast. Would there be an opportunity to request more staffing opportunities, you know, to increase the staffing? Um for that, uh for that position, so we have more um help.
It did look like there at, in Teddy's letter that he shared, uh there was a request at the
Oh, was there? Okay, thank you.
Put that in if, yeah, since, there we go, or park rangers, yeah.
Oh, perfect, perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
And just to add, we did get uh an additional park ranger, um but it was just one. So I would include this again. Uh you know, and I, and I, you know, I'm gonna probably take this and compare it to what we got into the adopted budget and pretty much leave in everything that uh and pretty much leave in everything that uh, we didn't get, because you just never know, right? But we always try to shoot for the moon and the original, so the first letter that goes out is in January. We throw the kitchen sink at it. And then as we go through the process through the May revise, that's when we know what's going to be included, what's not, and then we have to pare it down um, through that whole budget process. So, but, but the first letter um, that goes out in January should have everything included. Um, and typically, some of these things just sail through and they're in the mayor's proposed budget. And then the council has to go through and either say nay or yay to those things. And then the last one is when we really try to get the big ticket things in there that weren't included. And sometimes the mayor proposes a budget that already includes an additional ranger, so we don't have to, you know, the, the nickel and dime with, with that. But um, as we know in, in OB, we still need park rangers for all of our parks, including Sunset Cliffs, Saratoga and, and Vets Plaza. So just, just a word there. Sorry, I don't want to hijack you guys's.
No, you're, um, you're, what you're saying makes perfect sense, Teddy. Just FYI, I have to kind of switch a little mental gear um, in about five minutes. So um, I don't know, so last year, you know, we kind of came up with a list of things that we wanted to, to ask for. And then Andrea actually put together the letter and submitted it. So, you know, we weren't writing a letter by committee. Can anybody think of anything else that they would want to add into the letter? And then Andrea can take them and put them in the um, appropriate, like chunks of area or areas before I've switched mental gears.
Yeah, Newman, you've had your hand up for a while.
Newman's muted and talking.
Newman, you gotta unmute yourself. No, I'm not the host anymore.
I don't know if he's paying attention to the meeting, actually. He doesn't look like he's, he looks like he's talking to somebody else.
That's fine.
Hey, Anthony, Anthony Bennett, did you still have a comment? Cause your hand is raised.
I think that was.
No, I don't, yeah, I don't have any more comments. Thank you.
Um, does anyone still need to see the letter? Or can we unshare the screen just so I can see everyone again?
You can unshare.
Andrea, um, is there any opportunity for the community to request more funding for tree planting and tree maintenance? Within the community? That, that's one I, I saw that might not be there, that could be um, requested.
Okay, that one, yeah, so that would kind of fall under public safety and maintenance, so we could put that with street watching. Okay, yeah, this is all starting to make sense. Um, yeah, is there anything, any other big thing? Should we read them back and then?
Yeah, let me just, I'll read them one more time, just the ideas that I have, and if anybody has any extras to throw in. Okay, sidewalks, washing, sidewalk washing vouchers for businesses, trash receptacles, dog bag dispensers. Uh, keep CPG budget intact for technology, et cetera. Ebers Park water fountain shade structure, fencing, kids playground. Storm drain entrances that are broken and allowing trash to flow into the ocean. Traffic safety around school, uh, full time homeless outreach person, more park rangers and more tree planting and maintenance. You're.
And then continue, yeah, and then continuing budget requests from the last time.
Right, so.
Continuing, can we say continuing unfunded? Can we say continuing unfunded budget requests?
Yeah, from prior year, from your prior, sorry Craig.
Okay, so the continuing uh, unfunded request from the prior year would be the lifeguard, the li- lifeguard station and the library.
Yeah.
Okay.
And pier and, yeah.
Yeah, lifeguard, library and pier. Was that it?
Uh, I think there was a few kind of pedestrian things, like, like the Niagara crosswalk is someone who lives right on that corner.
Did we, did we ask for um, rec center improvements one year that?
We did, but the rec center, I think, correct me if I'm wrong Teddy, I think they are getting AC and some other, and wifi and some other technical upgrades. So we can ask for more, but that's kind of, that was like our big thing, that we really wanted AC in that meeting room.
Yeah, under, under our letter, uh, I think it's neighborhood services. We have like a whole section for rec centers and libraries. And folks usually typically like, they'll say we need new painting or we need a new, like, we got a, like a fenced off area for the dog park. And like, you know, some, some of the things are low hanging fruit that can be included into an overall rec center improvement uh, effort with the city. And so then if it's, you know, spelled out, like you guys needed a, a new AC, um, those things were included. And it doesn't always get in there, but when it's pretty specified what they need, like the water fountain at Eber Street. I think is, is, you know, a great example of something that we could easily get for park improvements. Um, and then we list them out. So yes, the rec center did get money. I'm not sure where the, those projects are at, but they definitely did get funding.
I don't see our particular rec center listed under the rec center improvements list.
It was the previous year.
As well.
Oh, previous year, okay.
That's what I remember. Um, and I, and I can double check, but yeah, I, I try to keep track of all these projects as best I can. It was just a million.
Yeah.
Eber Street, I mean, yeah, alright.
Alright, cool.
I think, um, you know, in an effort to try to see success for these projects, I understand throwing the whole kitchen sink at the first round. But I think for like the dog bags and the tree services, if we could be specific about what areas we, we really would like to see those in, that would, I, you know, that's gotta help strengthen an argument versus just holistically saying we want to see a bunch of dog bags and tree um, services increased.
I would put that under like environmental and or like uh, street improvements.
So I think the buckets, we can decide on the buckets, but I mean specifically like what streets or what sections of town are we wanting those things to be found in? And I don't remember who suggested them, but I think we should just call out a zone like we have for some of these other projects.
Chris, to, to your point, um, I know in the downtown and Little Italy area and throughout um, uh, the city, certain areas are under a bid. So this might be something that you say, uh, supporting bids. And then in what way? And then it can be to support their efforts to clean sidewalks and to provide dog trash bags, like those are, because everyone has a bid throughout their cities. So if there's an item in this overall city budget that says increased support for business improvement districts, and then it can itemize that out as dog trash bags and, uh, and street sidewalk cleaning. Support them, then it's not the city having to fund someone to go and clean it out. It's support, giving money to the bid to then go and do those things, if that makes.
To determine, yeah, okay, yep, that makes sense. Again, just being a little bit more specific.
They should replace the trees that have been cut down. On my block alone, they've cut down five palm trees in the last twelve months.
Tracy, do you want to mute yourself? Thank you. Uh, okay, I'm, you live on Cape May, Richard?
Correct.
Okay.
Cape May, between table and bacon. So we've lost five humongous palm trees and it's, it's, the whole, whole street is barren. It looked horrible.
Richard, uh, the tree planting is usually in our budget, but there is a, a page, a landing page of the city website for requesting tree replacements for this exact um, thing. I'll try to find it right now and put it in the chat, but just so you know.
Yeah, thank you very much. That would be very nice. Thank you.
Mandy?
I was just gonna ask, has the stump been removed, Richard, of those palm trees?
They cut them level to the ground. So the stump is, actually, it's not really a stump, but yeah, no, the roots are still there. They haven't dug them up.
Okay, that might be an issue that the city needs to address to make the area plantable.
I spoke to.
So going under like the bucket system, uh, we, we definitely want to do support for bids. We want to do pedestrian and elementary school safety, uh, tree and reforestation efforts, including uh, trimming as well, uh, to, 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 and then infrastructure improvements, which is including, I would even throw storm wander under there, I think, stormwater drains, uh, and the pier, lifeguard station, library, uh, park improvements, uh, that will be another bucket. And then, yeah, support for CBGs. So I have a, a big old list, um, but, and then uh, uh, budget for more staff. So that would include park rangers, homelessness outreach, um, what have you. The only other thing, and I hesitate to put it in there because it hasn't been fully approved yet, is I'm debating uh, whether or not we ask for the funding uh, for the overnight parking enforcement that we've previously requested and is supposed to kind of go through the coastal commission and whether we do in fact want to request money for the gates to lock up the lots so that that can be enforced. Just because it hasn't been fully approved yet, I don't know if we want to go ahead and request it because it hasn't been approved.
I think all the coastal areas are being handled as one package, when it comes to that.
Do we have a timeline, Andre, for when we think we might know if that's been approved? Because that might help decide if we want to throw it in.
Yeah, I actually don't know the time. I know that it was approved by parks. Teddy, do you know if Parks and Rec has filed with the coastal commission for those permits yet?
I think they're, I think they're still uh, in that process and they were garnering. So this was, so obviously OB was the, the spear on this, right? Like our lots were, were the first ones to bring this issue to light. Um, the new mayor came in and uh, wanted to see what he could do to, to address this and found out that all of our beach lots were out of compliance with uh, the, the coastal commission. So then they had to go through Mission Beach, Pacific Beach, La Jolla, um, to get that uh, uh, back in compliance. And they're doing a bit of uh, community outreach to figure out, I think they've already gone through the community outreach. This community obviously did a bunch of.
Yeah.
Yeah, Koda might know a bit more there.
Yeah, parts of rec staff um, are basically at the end stages of collecting all of that feedback. Um, and their staff is reviewing it now. Um, obviously, there's community groups like you guys who submitted letters, but there's also a lot of one-off letters that came from residents, so it's a lot of feedback to sort through. Um, and so they're trying to rely more heavily on the ones that came from actual community groups, um, since that was where the outreach was done. Um, so they should be wrapping that up in the next two weeks or so. Um, and then I think they're looking at an end of year, early January submission date.
So I think that would be fair to add into our budget.
Yeah. Yeah. I agree.
Yeah, Mandy?
That's what I was just asking uh, to do, because I think the Sunset Cliffs Natural Park Council, uh, Virginia Wilson and I serve on that board. They would appreciate that, because they're currently funding the costs to shut the gate at the park at the end, so they would appreciate that help.
Okay, yeah, and I, well, and I think that's, um, you know, I think park rangers are supposed to kind of be helping with that as well. And I, um, you know, okay, cool.
Yeah.
Okay, that was the last thing off the top of my head. Is anyone else think? If you can remember anything else, otherwise, um, I can go ahead and throw, because I know, Chris, usually you want to see a letter first. It'll, it'll follow the same format as our other budget letters. Um, I'm not, I promise guys, I'm not gonna write some crazy letter and throw things in.
I trust you, Andre. I trust you. We have, we have last years to build on, so.
Yeah, so it'll look a lot like that. Alright. Um, so I guess, can I get a motion to approve? I wanted to get out um, early tonight, add a really late CPC Newman first. Uh, do I have a second? Thank you, Chris. Uh, and then uh, Tracy's back. Do you want to call the roll? Can you call the roll?
Yeah, um, real quick, okay. Melanie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hold on, let me turn down my phone, hold on. Okay, uh, Chris, uh, Anthony?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jane? I see you say yes. Tom? I see him say yes. Craig?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Newman? Gotcha, thumbs up. Nicole?
Yes.
Virginia?
Yes.
Alright, cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had, we had a pretty late CPC meeting going on. Um, just, I'll roll right into the chair's report. So we were talking a lot about CPG reform. I don't know if you guys remember. We discussed it like, I want to say over a year ago about um, just the different rules they're trying to implement. So Joe Lacava, the council member up in District One, has taken it on and he was presenting a lot. Um, so there's a lot of stuff coming down, a lot of changes, uh, and I will keep you guys informed about how we want to, I assume, push back against a lot of those changes. As I mentioned, uh, they're trying to kind of take a budget. They're, they want to completely separate CPGs from the city. Uh, so we wouldn't have any more hosting on the city's website. We wouldn't be getting reimbursed from the city for expenses. Uh, we wouldn't have a set planner with us and we'd have a lot less say so over projects. Uh, you know, a lot of development projects wouldn't even, wouldn't be, they, no, no development projects would be required to come in front of us before. Uh, and the city would not even really be sending us the plans and keeping us in the loop on what's going on. Uh, also, a fun one that would directly affect us is that Tom, uh, you couldn't have two people from the same household serving on a planning board. So. Either Tom or Jane, yeah.
Is that the Geronski amendment?
Yeah. Um, so I'll, I'll be keeping you, y'all in the loop how that moves forward. Right now, it's completely draft language. It hasn't even come before land use and housing and anything. So uh, there's plenty of time to, you know, keep it all together. So that's on that. And then I had a really good meeting with the library people today. So they will be coming back. We're going to have kind of a hybrid model where we're going to do a survey about all of the different features that the library has the ability to change. Uh, they've made it very clear that the footprint of the building is going to stay the same. But as far as landscaping goes, you know, the actual layout of the building, uh, materials used outside of the building and other things like that, um, that's all still up for debate. So we're gonna do a hybrid approach where for maybe one or two weeks, when the library reopens in mid-January, we will, you'll be able to go in and, and look over all the different options that we have and put your votes in. And hopefully we'll also have an online option to do this if you don't want to go into the library. And then after those two weeks, we want to compile those and then have a community meeting again, uh, where we go over the results and how everyone was feeling, how, like, you know, woke up in those votes versus everything, have that discussion. And then we'll move forward with the final design of the library. Uh, so they didn't hear us. We're coming up with an approach to give good feedback. So keep an eye out for that in about mid-January. Can I get through one more thing, Melanie, and then I'll call on you? Okay, perfect. And then like I said, uh, like we've been talking about street vending, December fourteenth. We'll see the draft hopefully uh, real soon here. Alright, Melanie?
Oh, okay, so my concern about the library uh, revision. Are, did they take any of our concerns into account truly that we, we don't want to just have landscaping input? We want to have a lot of design input and everything as well. I mean, what, am I understanding that we really don't have a say anymore? Or they're really not going to listen to what we have to say, except for when it comes to the landscaping?
Nope, so there's a lot of different design elements. We will be able to change. Uh, but like I said, the footprint is pretty firm. Like, we, we can't really have any say over the footprint. But as far as outdoor materials and um, design choices, there are still many that we have a say in. And those will be presented to us uh, while we're go, while, during that process.
Okay.
And.
If I could just add real quick, you know, the, the goal, the goal from our office and from the mayor's office is to uh, kind of beef up that community input process. We had a good meeting today where we're trying to figure out what that looks like and uh, give people a chance to really come in. And just like with the peer, provide information. Obviously, these are huge projects. Um, and, and it always comes down to what's feasible, what's possible under the, the current budget. Um, but we do want to give this community the chance to, to be involved in those things. And I think there are a, a few avenues where, where that's possible. So we'll be putting out info uh, soon and, and all the groups um, in OBMA or OB, OBMA Town Council Planning Board will be involved in that process. So yes, you'll, you'll have some say so in, in, in the process.
Alright, um, and then. Final thing, I, I have a request on next January's agenda that um, one of the developers who will be bidding on the sports arena site wants to come and present their plans. So. Uh, we'll also be seeing that in January. So that could be exciting. Um, so I see Anthony with his hand up. I saw Anthony's hand up first and then I saw Mandy's. Uh, but let's go to a treasures report first, because I know Craig has been shopping at the bit to give it ever since he logged on. And then like I said, Anthony and Mandy.
Might as well let you know, um, there's currently one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents available in the uh. Planning Board bank account.
Awesome, okay. Um, Anthony?
Hey Andrea, uh, a question for you, um, regarding the uh, the proposed changes to the structure of the community planning boards. Would it be appropriate for this board to draft our own opinion? And submit it as a group on the changes if we have, if, I suspect we all have a cohesive. Mindset about those changes. I'm not going to guess what that could be, but that if we do, that would it be appropriate for us then, and you represent us at the, at the CPG to. Uh, it's at our will for this. I mean, it's, I think it's important.
Absolutely. If you guys haven't seen them, I will go ahead and email that out to you, um, probably tomorrow morning, not gonna lie. I'm gonna shut down my computer for the night after this, uh, and I'll email all those out so you guys can review them. And that could totally be something on a January agenda. Uh, based on just, you know, the amount of projects we have to see.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Uh, did you do, Mandy?
Is it okay if I give uh, an update from the peninsula at this time?
Yeah, go for it.
Alright, cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Updates, yeah.
Um, thank you, everyone. Um, I did want to thank Andrea. Um, I did request the meeting recording last night from the CPC meeting. And so. Um, I also asked Tony to send it to all the chairs, um, of, all the boards in our city, because I felt like the content of that meeting was very informative. And it'll give us some guy, you know, guidance with regard to all these changes that are going on. And um, I did also want to thank your, thank you for your comments. Andrea. Uh, made a really great public comment and in regards to equity and them removing um. Our, our money, you know, that they're, they use, that they help support us um, with regards to our website or, or meeting rooms. So I really did appreciate that. Um, comment, and I know others did as well, Andrea. But um, two things I wanted to let you know about the um, planning group. The first is the Cannon Street Pocket Park. We had a meeting today with Koda regarding um, the park. Uh, recently in the last year, this park has been under um, design. It's fully designed, ready to go to bid, but the issue is since it's um, since. The project started almost seven years ago, the costs have increased for the, the, the park. And so. We have, um, we've been wanting to get answers with regard to how much money is available um currently, how much has been spent. Um, so that we can find um, potentially the funding gaps with other organizations potentially. And so we had a great meeting with Andy Field and Koda and Fred and Dawn and I. And we're going to have a follow-up meeting with the engineers to um, discuss the pocket park and ask. Um, in January, there will be a letter being presented to the board with regard to the pocket park. Um, and we will be requesting that it be placed um, as a high priority for the peninsula's budget. Um, for next year fiscal year twenty-two. Um, I did also want to let everyone know as well that the Newport Palm Trees, I wanted to provide an update. John and Tracy Vander Walker were the community members that were advocating for those trees not to be removed um, due to. Their um interference with the um, airport's radar when planes come and, and uh, return from the west side. Of, um. Instead of over Bankers Hill. And so we have made connection with Scott Peters office. He has initiated an FAA inquiry into the matter. Um, the mayor is interested in um, placing a pause on this right now. And so there is. Um, they are not slated for, they're, they're, everything's been paused and I have been made aware that the airport sent. Um, a surveying company out to the neighborhood on Monday and Tuesday to resurvey and. Evaluate those trees to determine what the actual height of the trees are. And so again, we, there's no guarantee with the outcome. But it is um encouraging to have that support from the mayor and from our congressman as well. So. The mayor is in contact with the federal, eh, the FAA, and hopefully in the next few weeks, we can get some. Uh, answers to some of the questions that we have with regard to how the rate of growth. Um, we've been made aware that the airport is transitioning their um radar into a GPS. Uh, LiDAR five G system, which would then remove the need for the trees to be removed. Um, and then as well as um. Uh, determining the, the right, the question regarding the right of way. That's a question for the city attorney and uh, Koda was going to provide. Um, us more information of regarding the right of way. Because a lot of people don't realize that the urban forest in our city, it, that's where it exists in the right of way. And our request is really to determine the relationship and who has ownership of these trees, who's responsible for the watering? And who's responsible for the maintenance? And so we really just want to um, determine. Who owns what and, and who is responsible to care for these trees? Um, so that was very encouraging. And then um, if, you know, if the federal aviation, uh, if FAA comes back and says, hey, we, we've done our review. These trees have to go, then um, we will have no other recourse than to remove those trees. And then if that does happen, we will, um, you know, Koda said that the city would reach out and work with the neighborhood to work with them to um. Replant trees that they would like to see along their street that are drought tolerant and achieve canopy. So I did want to let everyone know about those updates. And um, just commend um, the community members, you know, Tracy and John, they were advocating for their community and I, I commend them for um. Taking the time to uh, step up for the community. So that's all I have. Um, our next board meeting uh, will be in January. And so we meet on the third Thursday of every month at six PM. So, thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mandy. And then I see Chris's hand up.
Sorry, and I might be taking a left turn into completely different territory before we're ready, but I, I missed last meeting and I just was wondering, are we doing anything as a board for the holiday parade? Um, that's this weekend. Did we talk about that? And if not, that's fine. I'm just curious to know what people's thoughts are on that.
Yeah, we did not, um, because Tracy is usually in charge of that.
Tracy is our event committee, I know, and so.
She is working it, um, so.
Okay. Maybe next year.
Enjoy yourself, yeah, cheer it on.
I, I thought it was so good to hear that. I guess it was two years ago. I just think that that's such an important event for us to, to show up at a little bit. Um, but I get it. It's, it's a crazy, another crazy year here, but. I'll uh.
You can always volunteer. You can always volunteer.
I'm preemptively volunteering myself for next year's holiday parade committee, okay? I got twelve months to back out of it.
There are some points that sometimes it's just a banner and people waving, you know. I, Jane, little tip from a, a previous judger of the. Braves, those ones are the worst. They get no points. We can't do that because we do have a banner somewhere, right? So.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Cool.
Yeah. Alright, any other?
Andrea, I have a question. Um, I had a merchant ask me today, who's responsible for enforcing street vendors?
Hopefully.
There is no evidence, there is no.
Yeah, after December fourteenth, we'll know.
After December fourteenth, we'll know?
Yeah, that's when the street vending ordinance is coming in front of city council and we'll see what the rules are. And then from there, they'll be able to enforce, because currently there are no rules.
There are no rules, okay, because they had a vendor set up in front of this merchant and they got really, really upset and they didn't know that the police are not enforcing anything right now.
Yeah.
That's probably why.
Yeah.
There's nothing to enforce.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll let it know.
They're selling illegal drugs. That.
Roger that.
That's the only enforceable event, offense.
Yeah, Andrea, I spoke with OBMA about this earlier and um, since there was literally like an open flame, like they had a charcoal grill.
Okay.
Already like violations on the books that don't, so it's very confusing right now.
That's exactly the merchant that was complaining.
Okay.
Yeah, so I've, I've heard about this. I'm contacting PD and fire department and compliance and. Looking at the municipal code to look at like, what is the actual violation? Because it's a public right of way.
Yeah.
Um, so if they're blocking the public right of way, that's got to be a violation. If you're barbecuing stuff on the sidewalk, there's got to be a violation. So I'm literally sifting through the Muni code. To see what, because there's already violations, right? Like vending is.
Yeah.
Separate. Um, so we're looking at this, but Richard, uh, point well taken. And, and yes, the vendor's ordinance will. Likely address the vendors we've seen in Veterans Plaza, but this issue is different because it's a fire hazard and, you know, uh, like a safety issue. So I'm, I'm trying to look through the Muni code to find. Like, I don't, I don't know that it's legal to, um.
The barbecues were right up against his building.
Yeah. It could start a fire.
Five to ten foot away from the building.
Yeah, there, yes. So there are Muni codes that I'm trying to search through that show that it's already a violation, but I think given the fact that it's a vendor, it kind of conflates the issue with, with enforcement. So we're trying to figure that out. But yeah, I'm, I'm aware and we're, we're looking into it right now.
Thank you, Teddy.
Okay. Good meeting, everyone. Hopefully I'll see y'all out at, yeah, the Christmas parade in everyone's festive best. Um. But otherwise have a safe and happy, or sorry, holiday parade, sorry, holiday. I'm. I'm happy Hanukkah to anyone who's celebrating and yeah, and all the other holidays that come up. Everyone stay safe. Uh, and I'll see you in the new year. If I don't see you on Saturday. Bye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
See you next time.